Call media to order, roll call.
Mayor Corbett.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Here.
Alderman Sisk.
Here.
Alderman Spicer.
Here.
Alderman Wall.
Here.
Need to adopt the agenda, we got a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion to carry his new business review to fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, proposed budget.
Yeah, yes sir, thank you very much. I know that one of my job duties that I have is to present a balanced budget to this board each year. And I just kind of emphasize, this is my fourteenth time presenting to the board an annual budget. As you know, it's a long process. We start in January and we have a department head meeting and then we go through all the things that we, that they'd like to see, their needs and their wants for the next following year. And we have the budget retreat. And we, we discuss the various capital projects. And then we go ahead and Jason and I spend a lot of time with Marcy there with him and Derek and I, the four of us, spend a lot of time going over all the numbers. You know, we have basically fifteen funds that we manage. Many are restricted by policy, local and state laws. And then we have three funds specifically that are user fee funded and they're enterprise funds. Those, those are the funds that you can't start manipulating. You can't take funds and take them out of like wastewater and put it in general fund. We just can't do that. We're not allowed by law. So that has to stay put. Same thing with our storm water, same thing with our sanitation. So those funds are kind of restricted. And then you have impact fee funds that are restricted on what you can do with those funds. Specifically mainly it has to do with adding things. So like if you're gonna add another police officer, you need another car. If you need to add another fire truck because you have more people, so you add another fire truck, those type of things. When it comes to roads, are you, it has to be strictly in your main arterios or collector roads and it has to be for widening. You can't use for, just for paving roads. So we're really kind of tight, but you know, there was a lot of needs and wants that was requested by the boards, by all the department heads. I got ten departments asking for money. So it makes it very difficult for us to try to, you know, fund everything. Our goal in every one of our funds is to have thirty percent of operating revenues for cash flow, for fund balance, basically to have in reserve. And so we, you know, we, we aim to try to hit that. When it comes to our general fund, we're, we're, in our projections, we're always usually around at twenty-three to twenty-six, maybe twenty-seven percent. We never quite get to thirty, but during the year, as things maybe don't get done, that capital projects that are get delayed for reason, for whatever reason, whether it's a, you know, right of way that isn't being able to be purchased or something slows it down. Or they, basically sometimes the department head will say, you know, I need a different product and, or maybe I was able to save some money, so type of thing. So we end up like, you know, you know, I think it was the year before when we, we started out thinking we're gonna be around twenty-three, twenty-four percent. We end up almost being at fifty percent that year. Because like a big project like Raymond, I mean, the sidewalk project we're trying to do down here for Raymond Herson Thirty-One W. If that project doesn't get funded, that fund balance still stays strong and it gets carried over into the next year. So I, I kind of just want to just preface that to kind of give you an idea that when it came to the general fund this year. I always liked, when Jason and me, I was like, let's start with the easier funds. And so, you know, like dental care fund, your cemetery fund, those are usually fairly easy. Standalone, there's money there. If there's a project, project that's gonna be in that, in that fund, it's usually paid for. And so we got, we took all those out of the way. And then the, the general fund though was a little bit harder this year because it, it seemed like when we started out in the negative percent. And I thought, whoa, 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 this is, that's really deep. And so we started looking at it and I, I spent days thinking, man, Jason, you must have missed something somewhere or another. And so we were looking at it and he didn't. He, he was spot on with the, with the budget numbers. And so we had to start looking at what, what projects need to be cut. So I look at, you know, sometimes I look at the matrix scores, I look at the, what the cost of the project is, is something that could be delayed. And then what I gave you was a, a list that had one point six million dollars in cuts. And then I was able to move other, other things that were requested in the general fund and move them into other funds that would fund them okay and still meet the criterias of those funds. For example, something that, let's say Kevin needed something for parks, he asked for it in the general fund, but we're able to use it in either park sales tax or we could use it in parks impact fee, I shifted it. So that was another four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars I moved. And then on top of that, it still wasn't enough. We were still really lacking. So I, I had to, I started crunching numbers and I told Jason, this is the only thing I can do. And I did this one other time. It may have been ten years ago or so. I said, we have to cut every line item in the general fund budget, every one of them, cap, whatever it is, every line gets cut. So we cut it by seven percent, everything. And that, that brought us to twenty-two percent in fund balance. And so that's, that's challenging. I presented that to the department heads yesterday at their department head meeting. They were all jumping up and down excited about the seven percent cut, as you can imagine. I got some, some stares. I got, you know, scared looks in some people's face. But we did it that year, we had five percent. And I think we're gonna try, we're definitely gonna go for it this year and see if we can cut seven percent out of each, each line item. It's gonna be challenging because the department has had flexibility. I said, you have the flexibility to, you know, move what money you need to move, to cut what you think you need to cut, to make those decisions. I don't want to go into your individual budgets and micromanage your budgets. And I just don't do that. And so they all agreed that that's something that they would be looking at and trying to find ways to make that happen for them. So I think the best thing to do is, is really just look at the, at the general fund. We're, we're gonna base, I mean, we're gonna look at the capital projects, the ones that are gonna get funded. We actually are gonna fund eighteen point five million dollars in, in capital projects throughout the different funds that we have available to us. That's quite a bit of money that we're gonna spend. So we're gonna get a lot of things done. But when we look at what's being cut in this, the other page I gave you. You know, we are kind of, I'm not gonna give everybody the personnel, you know, that they've requested. As you already knew, I already had cut some at the, before the, at our last budget retreat. And then I even had to cut some more like the police officer firefighter and building inspector. One thing to look at, you know, we had to fund this new building that we're adding it. Between you, when you, I'm a funding the operations of that new building with personnel and things of that nature, it put about another four hundred thousand dollars on our operational budget. So that was, that was significant that we had to find a way to overcome that too. So I guess it probably would be best, because I, we can, we can go into all the different funds, but I really don't necessarily think that we really need to do that. When you, I think I gave you a sheet that looks like this, it has handwritten notes. When you go down through it, you can see all of our funds are gonna hit our fund balances. All of them are funded properly. All of them have the, have the, have the projects in there that are allowed to be in there. And, and I think we're pretty good. So the only one that we're really struggling with, again, is the general fund. So when I look at, you know, what projects did we get cut that maybe you, the five of you, may have concerns with and let's talk about it. And so I'd like to talk about those funds. So think about it. Anybody would like to start? I'm, I'm here.
Yes, I'd like to talk about the Wilkinson Lane and the Boyle's Road paving. Because we had talked about the importance of that.
Right.
And, you know, you know, we already hear people complaining about it constantly, especially the Wilkinson Lane area and all those.
Yeah.
tributaries along through there.
Cluster paving is, to me, the most important part of that Wilkinson Lane project because a lot of those roads haven't been hit. I grew up over there. And a lot of the, I mean, Hollis, all those little tiny.
Those little cul-de-sacs.
Haven't, haven't been paved since I can remember.
Right.
And it's not even my ward.
Yeah, I got a call on Hollis Court and it's not even my ward. So it's, you know, I've got friends that live over there. So it's, you know, if I were gonna pay, do sod walks versus making sure these roads are fixed, I think I'd have to go for the roads. And I don't know if everybody's aware of the fatality that was on Boyle's Road a couple nights ago with motorcycle.
Yeah, motorcycle accident, that's correct.
Hopefully that was not caused, caused by the road.
Yeah, we, when I looked at Boyle's Road, you know, first of all. First of all, Pleasant Grove Road was also cut from the budget in early, not want to say early, like late in the game. I even cut that one out of the project, but then I went home and, you know, tossed around at night thinking about, is there anywhere I could find some money to add to the six hundred thousand dollars that we do for paving? And I came to Jason next day, I said, Jason, debt fund. We, we, you know, we've already, we're past the thirty percent. We could, we could squeeze another four hundred fifty thousand out of there. So we did that and we got it down like thirty-two percent, I think the debt service fund is. And we shifted that money into, into paving, but we put it in the general fund and I listed this Pleasant Grove Road. We thought that, my thinking was that we could take Boyle's Road out of the state street aid, we have six hundred thousand in there for paving. That would be about a hundred thousand. That would give us five hundred thousand dollars to do other roads that are in bad shape. And I've asked Isaiah, he, he's looked at that and he knows what roads, what he would spend that money on. The other option I thought that we could possibly do is, because we're not gonna be able to fund both, all these big roads, we just can't do it. You know, how many, you had to cut five, five million dollars off a budget and seven percent across the board amongst all the staff that's in the general fund, very challenging. I, what we could do is we could take the six hundred thousand state street aid. We can, we can add the four hundred fifty thousand I set aside for Pleasant Grove Road. And that's a million dollars. That would cover this, that would cover the Wilkinson Lane or Wilkinson Road along with the cluster roads that, that Isaiah planned on paving with that group. All those little cul-de-sacs, I think it's at Barkwood?
Barksdale.
Barksdale, Barksdale.
Hollis Court, Sod Walk.
Yes, sir, yeah. Those, volunteer is gonna get paid, for the most part, by the State Harbor. They're supposed to pave that road, but not all of volunteer. So there may be a little bit of volunteer that still has to be paid by us. But, so that's one thing we could do, but I, I didn't want to take that chance until I knew, you know, because paving roads, be honest, honestly, you all know this probably now, it's political. It is every year. I, in, I, three cities, it's political in every city. Who's getting what roads paved? You know, and we try to, you know, measure it out and data, I like data. And so we, you know, we have our list of roads that need to be paved. Well, I will say Wilkinson scored two, a little bit, two points higher than, than Pleasant Grove Road did in our matrix system. So that, that gave it a little bit of an edge up too. It's just was trying to come up with a million dollars. And I just didn't have no way of going back to the budget and finding a million dollars out of the general fund or state street aid because we don't have it. You like to look at road impact phase, you say, well, you're projecting two million for that. Yes, but that, that is for road widening on collector roads and that's where you're gonna need that money. We didn't spend any last year and I'm planning on not spending any this year because you're gonna need that money to finish out Calista Road Phase Two and Union Road from, from Harper Drive up to, up to the bridge.
We're not gonna pay Pleasant Grove Road?
Yes ma'am, it has to be one or the other. Yeah, that's where it comes, becomes political, yes. Whose ward is gonna be in and, sorry.
How many potholes did you fill the day we had the budget meeting, Isaiah?
One hundred and fifty.
Hundred and sixty-five or something like that on Pleasant Grove?
I mean, the problem we got here is they all need to be paved.
Oh, that's right. I mean, we, I've said that before, you give us, you give us about five million dollars, we can probably knock out what else, what we probably have left to pave throughout the city.
Where we stand on the money we, for the six road projects on it, we, we were, we saved some money on Covington, I mean, on North Palmer's. Are we gonna be able to save money throughout that?
Well, that's the thing, we have what we call restricted funds. We've, because we've already received the money from the loan that we took. So we, you know, we don't want to take that money and put it towards road paving project. We have these six projects that we told the citizens that we were gonna, we were gonna get done. And so I would really not start anticipating what we may, what we may have had a good break on, on, on North Palmer's and Sage. Will we have enough break when we come to Marlin Road at intersection? I think when we have the other one, Union Road intersection with Seventy-Six and then Calista Road, which is gonna be challenging. Jason's been telling me that all along, it's gonna be challenging with utilities and, and right of ways. So that's what we have to be considerate of.
One thing that I proposed before that I would like for us to look at again. It is an option. It's our, our local sales tax option that was put in place back oh-eight, is that correct? Was when it was voted in?
Uh, well.
Jason, you had it on the sheet, I can't recall exactly.
I don't remember that.
It's a, it's a point, point five percent increase in our, in our local sales tax option. And right now, all of that money is currently going towards the parks. And Jason and Mr. Herman researched that a little bit for us and they've determined, I think that we could pass a resolution, if we wanted to look at a resolution, to change that, to be able to utilize it for infrastructure or for paving. And that's an option. It's one point three million dollars. And I kind of, you know, one of the things I do is I look at other cities. I look at a lot of different things and see how they're doing. With, a lot of them have implemented this local sales tax option. And one of the things is Hendersonville has done that. So if you guys, that's Hendersonville's, they've separated the budget out. If you want to take a look at it and see how they're using that money. You know, it, it's being used for public safety, infrastructure, parks and paving. That's an option we have. It's, you know, we may not have to use all of it. If we use five, six hundred thousand dollars of it, I think we need to do something to get caught up with our, our road paving. We have gotten way behind and that's why we have roads that are in very poor condition. And the only way to fix that is to put funds towards it. And this, to me, I think Gerald, you've probably looked at every source you could probably look at. To me, this is really the only other source to go after except for taking out a bond. I mean, this is a revenue source that the state allows us to implement. And, you know, it, it doesn't have to be permanent. It's just, it could be until we get caught up with, with some of our road paving. I, I think I proposed about one point five million a year. Isaiah and I, we looked at linear miles in the city and based that upon, you know, say twenty-year repaving schedule. And that number was about one point five million, I think is what needed to be put in there annually. And we've only been putting in about five hundred annually.
Right, the station, you know, the state street aid is by population. So that's one thing where we're really hurting there with not having an adequate census. And as you know, the Census Bureau is, still has us on pause. I've seen where the president had an executive order last week that paused them again until the end of July. So it's gonna be sitting for a little bit longer. We've, we've done a congressional inquiry through Congressman Rose's office. I've signed documents for that to start, to see if we can get that. I did find out from the state of Tennessee, University of Tennessee program there that they, they did pass a law, just waiting for the president, the governor's signature, that will allow them to use their estimates as a certified rate to be able to calculate people's population, which is good. I'm hoping that they're able, as soon as this goes into place, I don't think it'll get done faster than our census, because I still think we're gonna get the census done. But, and I say that because that would have helped us, but you're right. You either, you know, you either go for a bond, the sales tax, the park sales tax. You know, and, and I don't have all the leisure services board members here, they, they may have a difference of opinion on that. But, you know, they're looking at, you know, pickleball courts, that's gonna have to be, we're trying to get grant money for that. Whenever you get, you know, to be able to get grant money, you have to show that you have money to be able to match it. And we've been able to do that successfully and bring in millions of dollars for the tennis courts and for the soccer complex. And we know we're gonna have a major park that's gonna have to be built out. That's gonna cost a lot of money with an aqua center, tennis courts, pavilion, multi-use fields. You're gonna be spending a lot of money there. So that's something you're gonna have to be thinking about, but that's why, you know, you all have to kind of give me some guidance. I don't really, I mean, we, we can move money from park sales tax. I don't even think this needs to be a resolution. I have to look, I don't think we did a resolution when we made the decision to put that money into the, into there. It's not all the local option. What we did was Summer County, you know, doesn't have that local option. Robertson County did. We basically took what we would have been paying into Robertson County and put that into that park sales tax fund. It's a fund that's a little more flexible. It's not like the impact fee funds or the state street aid fund. It's, it's got a little bit more flexibility. But that would be able to support if they wanted to transfer another, would you say, four hundred fifty thousand, I guess, to cover six hundred thousand, basically cover Boyle's and Pleasant Grove Road. So you'd have to take six hundred thousand from the park sales tax fund and shift it over to general fund.
Yeah, and that's my opinion. I think we need to play some catch up and we need funds to do that. And, you know, I think it's a good revenue source and it could be just temporarily. And then, but at long term, I do believe that we need to increase, and I think I've spoke to you and Isaiah about it, is increasing our budget. The state street aid just is not enough for the number of linear miles that we have in the city. I just don't see it covering. I'd hate to get back in this position again. So just keeping that budget to where we maintain our roads properly. And I think state street aid, even with the census increase, I think, you know, we'll see what those numbers are. I think we need to spend more money on our, our road resurfacing program year over year, but.
I, my only concern would be is if you took, you know, that six hundred thousand out of the, out of the park sales tax fund, that's, will leave us down to about, what, seven hundred thousand dollars? And Jason would have to figure out what that would calculate out percent, what their, if it still was, if falls within our thirty percent goal. See what he comes up with there. But again, this is your all's decision and I, you know.
I think it requires further discussion at a different time because I don't wanna, I think Leisure Services Board would need to talk about that because that takes away from our ability for grants and things for Leisure Services Board.
Yeah, we're at a pretty tight timeline to do this budget.
I'm not saying that roads aren't important. Obviously they are because we implemented a sales tax and improved or add a property, increase of the property tax to be able to do that. But I don't know that that's a hundred percent the answer.
No, my recommendation would be to, to make a decision. Which, which cluster do you want to do? Do you want to do the Pleasant Grove Road with Boyle's? Or do you want to do the Wilkinson Lane with the, with those cul-de-sacs that are in there? One or the other and then do the, then the next following year you get the other one done.
Of the six hundred thousand that we have set aside for the repaving budget now, can some of that be allocated to?
It would be, that's.
Can we make Wilkinson and that cluster area more of a priority than some of the others?
Well, you could. You would take the six hundred thousand there and the four hundred fifty I put towards Pleasant Grove Road, together you're gonna have enough money to do the Wilkinson Lane only, cul, with the cul-de-sacs included.
All right, but then you still have a hundred fifty-six potholes we're filling on Pleasant Grove Road.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so Wilkinson Lane is one point three miles is what, from the, from the, Seventy-Six to Calista is one point three. So Isaiah, I think, is right at four hundred thousand, is that correct? Four hundred thousand a mile, I believe. So you're looking at probably five hundred thousand, I would say, just to.
Well, we were looking at, like I said, nine hundred fifty thousand dollars is what he projected to do those cul-de-sacs and that, so. That pretty much would take all the money, that, that cluster. And we, pretty much what we've been doing with the six hundred thousand, or it's been growing each year, has been trying to knock out different subdivisions. And we've done pretty successful. I know they did Northwoods, Magnolia Village, they did the Behind Deer Crossing, they did Orchard Park this year, they've done Hampton Village. So they're moving our way. Now we've really got some really bad streets on Hill, Hillwood, Kennedy, they ain't never been paved either, I don't think. And then you go back over on Christian and Roberts Road, which a lot of us don't go down that way, which is off of Brinkley Lane, go by the Veterans Monument down there. Those roads are horrible, you know, they, they need to be paved too.
Those people are gonna start screaming soon.
Yeah, they need to be paved and then you, then you go over Coming Event, that group's gonna need to be paved too, too. So I, I think, you know, we're, we're, we're making end roads into it and we're just doing the best we can to keep up with it, so.
I'm with Sam. I think we need to make a hard choice and, and go, and get it done and go forward. Because, I mean, I get, I get calls from all the time about, I think, the potholes and the roads and especially on that, their side of the tracks, you know, but.
You're talking about Wilkinson Lane or?
Wilkinson.
And Pleasant Grove Road?
Yeah, Hollis Court, all those areas.
Take money where you can find it and put it in there?
Yeah, I mean.
For park sales tax?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, we're at, yeah, we're gonna have to do something, for sure.
Well, then I'll, I'll send all my pickleball people to you. The, the forty-five people that contact me on a regular basis, because I haven't had forty-five complaints about Hollis Road or Wilkinson Lane. Just saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we do have a lot of parks projects in there, but.
Which need to think priorities, you know, safety and priority. That's all we need to be thinking, so.
Right. I mean, we are, we are already committed next year to do the, the concession stand and the extra building they're putting there by the quad. And we're doing the dog park paving and we're putting a, netting or shade structure over the tennis courts. That's all tied to grants, so we have to fund that out of, and that's where that's coming out of, impact fees and park sales tax. We split it up between the two. So, because parks, impact fee, if it's an additional, something you don't have, you can, you can add to it and that's what we're using some of the funds for. But that's really the only pot of money that I know of is, and like Alderman Matthews has said, that's the only one that I know of that, you know, has some money that could do both roads. But you're taking away from, you know, your money you're gonna need for, for future parks. That's a tough one. You, you want parks, you, you street paved, you really need both, but, you know, we're doing the best we can and.
I could start on Pleasant Grove Road is we got a nice new traffic signal and then we got chuggles, you know, six inches deep all the way down.
Absolutely.
But Isaiah, if we were to shift and do Wilkinson this year and then wait next year, could we go out and do a somewhat decent job on filling in some of those holes and making it not so bad?
Yes, I think we, we could do that, but I think the same is true as if we go over to Wilkinson Lane and do the same thing. I'm just looking at it here, in this, in the road assessment list, there's two different sections of Wilkinson Lane that have been identified. The section from Seventy-Six approximately to the second entrance to Walmart is scored at a forty-five. The other section is scored at a twenty, they're at a thirteen. So I mean, just quick math, average score on that, you know, take those two numbers, divide them by two, that gives you a twenty-nine and a half score. And Pleasant Grove Road scores a twenty-five and a twenty-seven.
Out of a hundred?
I'm sorry.
Out of a hundred?
Out of a hundred, yes. But we did just, we are, we made an attachment for our skid steer tomorrow. It's coming in, excuse me, finally. And that'll give us the ability to be able to utilize the milling head that we already have. And we can mill out a whole bunch of potholes that have been patched and patched and patched and patched.
And Holly, right in front of Holly Tree, that's like a.
Yes.
That's bad.
It's Marco, it's Holly Tree, right in front of Holly Tree, areas on Wilkinson Lane that have been patched and patched and patched. My directive to my crew has been to mill that down to an inch and a half. And then we have the ability to, as wide as that will go, about seventy-two inches, we can mill that down. We can dump asphalt out of a dump truck since we have the dump trucks. We're getting into summertime, spring, summertime, we can dump that asphalt on the road and then we can just essentially screed it off, if you will.
What are the scores on the cluster streets around Wilkinson?
Hollis Court scores a forty-eight.
That would be priority to me over.
Well, one of the things is we went in and did Orchard Park, which was higher than both Pleasant Grove and Wilkinson. You know, that, this, this last paving season, we did the entire subdivision. And those roads actually rated, I think, in the fifties, probably above that. You know, so I, I've been under the impression, you know, the next, I've got the list right here that was in our, our budget last, last year. We had a, a list of roads that was coming up. It was the Wilkinson Lane cluster. I've been communicating that to my constituents because I thought we would be following, even if we added additional funds, we would be following the road paving list that was put out to the public.
Another, another thing I want you to consider is that, you know, Pleasant Grove Road has now, the subdivisions that are out there that are using that road are probably seventy-five percent built out. You go to Wilkinson Lane, the subdivisions that are gonna be using that, the Calista Farms or Jackson Farms, Calista Farms and all the other ones that are out there, the thousand homes out there. There's, there's probably not even fifty percent built. So there, there's gonna be a lot more trucks traveling up and down Wilkinson Road for another year, a year and a half than you're seeing, than you'll see on Pleasant Grove Road, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about people that have lived there for forty years on that road. And they're not too concerned about the people that are moving in at the end of the subdivision. They've paid into that tax base year after year after year. Now they've got a road that's in horrible condition.
But will a new paved road be able to, I mean, all, all those trucks coming in and out of there, it'll hold up pretty good. I mean, it's gonna wear the life of it down a little bit, but.
It, it would pretty quickly. It, it's going to damage the road and milling it down and putting a binder down would really be the, the best thing to do. But that would be completely eliminating the road that is there and going down to road base and building up road base from red clay to top of asphalt and everything in between, which is extremely costly. When you start talking about that. And to your point, Alderman Matthews, I just wanted to clarify a little bit that what we were trying to do whenever we're paving entire subdivisions is there for a while, we're trying to avoid mobilization costs. We're trying to keep them in one centralized area. Whenever we have roads that are in one subdivision, we didn't bounce around.
He smell the roads.
Yeah, because that's heavy equipment that they have and they're trying to move it around and they're gonna charge it. Every time they move it from one site to another, the cost goes up.
So that, that was, I'm not saying right, wrong or indifferent, sir. I'm just, I just wanted to shed some light on that. That was the reasoning to provide an explanation as to why we did it in that manner.
What are the mobilization costs? Have you asked?
Seven five hundred dollars every time it moves from site to site.
So when they, if they move it a mile and a half across the city?
Seven five hundred dollars.
You don't think Rogers Group would waive that for us? I mean, we, we do a lot of business with them.
Possibility, but they charged it to us once before, so.
But with. To me, if the need is there, I think paying it is, is acceptable. You know, I, I'm looking at, you know, one of the other cities that have done, that has proposed quite a bit of paving is Columbia, Tennessee. They're gonna be paving twenty miles of roads and they're doing it with four million dollars, two hundred thousand dollars a mile. And if you look at their map that they put out. And if you look at their map that they put out, they're not doing it in clusters. They have, they're they use the exact same scanning technology that we, similar to what we have used, and they're going to where the need is. They know it's political, they're going to where the need is exactly at. And if you look at their map and go online and look at it, they move around to where the need is at. So I understand the the cluster paving where you don't get hit with the cost, but again, when we've got roads that are in just horrible condition, um, you know, going in and doing an entire subdivision that really could probably wait. To me, that 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 sends a bad taste to some of the people here in the city.
Do they utilize their own paving equipment or do they pay someone else to do it?
I I don't know, Gerald and I talked about that, we we may reach out to to see how they're able to get that cost down.
I'm not sure, so.
So where are we at?
I did notice that also, um, under the Covington Heights construction, there's only five hundred thousand there. And the cheapest route we had was six forty-five. I've got six forty-five, seven sixteen and eight forty-six, unless something's changed since last time we talked about it.
Was the higher rating still, wasn't it the lower rating? I think that's where you get the estimate of five hundred thousand, yeah. That 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 was started out, what, twenty-five years or something like that instead of ten years?
This is the fifty-year, the fifty-year, the three options.
Yeah, yeah, those are higher ends, he.
And to me, that's a priority project too.
In our new subdivisions is what is why we came up with the five hundred thousand to.
You know, those homeowners getting hit over there, it's just, it's totally unacceptable and to me, that's a priority project, we need to need to make certain.
It's in there, it's gonna get done, Company and Ben's gonna get done.
He's talking about the funding for it, the funding for it.
Well, because he's, because they're talking about, when we talked about this at the previous budget time, it was talking about twenty-five year, fifty year, whatever, and that doesn't even match what is current.
Right.
What?
The lowest is not even.
Lowest was what, six hundred and?
Yeah, but that was for twenty-five year and where we.
Was for fifty, six forty-five was for fifty years, right?
To me is overly.
And that's what that's what Jason asked, I mean, what the the, that's why the estimate is lower than what you're seeing.
Yeah, because we're going off of what your plan?
Yeah, right.
Off of what, a ten-year, fifteen-year?
It's not, it's not going to, it's not going to go to the the fifty-year, hundred-year or five hundred-year, it'll likely be at the ten or twenty-five year.
Right.
Okay.
Whenever we're dealing, right now, I think what we currently have in there is two and five.
Right, so it's so it's over what we already require new builds, yeah.
Okay, all they care about is it's fixed.
Right, and it's in the budget.
Yeah.
I know, I mean, I mean a lot to all of you, but he's getting a public services building that we've been, they've been asking for for ten years at least. Uh, Joe Moss has asked, or probably asked for that twelve years ago, but anyways, we do, we were able to fund it this year. It was the first time I seen sanitation firm was finally able to help pay for the building that we've been wanting to do. So that means we've been bringing on a lot more customers, which has brought in more user fees, which is allowing us to be able to do that, so. So there's a lot of good things that's coming out of it, like I said, I know that the, uh, and I feel like the stormwater is taken care of, I feel like we've covered all the areas, parks is is well taken care of, police and fire, I was able to shift some of the police cars over into into impact fees because they've added, they've added new vehicles. And they haven't added new people, but they haven't gotten rid of all their vehicles, they still got some of the old vehicles they use as backups. So since they didn't get rid of them, we're able to show that we can justify purchasing them out of the impact fees. We're able to do their, you know, their 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 concept, I mean, their construction documents and design for the police department and fire department build outs for future. So I feel like we we got a lot done, I knew really the sticky point is gonna be, what do we do about Wilkinson Lane and Pleasant Grove Road? Do we, you know, do we do one one year and one the next? Or, you know, are you gonna require us to take funds from some, I mean, limited park sales tax really, uh, there's nowhere else to take it from, that's all we have, so.
I think if we can do one this year, make some repairs with that new equipment, you got to the other one, whichever one it is, I don't know, married to either one of them, but. Um, and then next year, come in with a full repave of the other one, I, I mean, it's not, it's not perfect, but I mean, I think it's.
If if I can, I I think that we also have the ability that, um, our fund balance continues to build month to month. Whenever we finalized Orchard Park, there was still, Jason can probably help me with this if he didn't mind. I think there was still a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in there, the last I checked, that we we accrued, what is it, thirty-five thousand a month?
We're looking at highways here, yeah, we had, that's what we had the end of March.
That's what we had, yeah, there was six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in there.
I think we're still waiting for invoices maybe for Orchard Park.
Uh, there's thirty-eight thousand dollars left to be paid on it, but I think that if you.
That probably came out of that amount, maybe.
Five hundred and two will come out of that amount, so we'll have a hundred and some thousand, it's not like we're zeroed out in that fund balance, it will continue to build. So it is possible to, in my opinion, that we will have enough money to be able to pay. It may not be the entire cluster, but it would probably be Wilkinson Lane and maybe some of the side, some of the smaller side streets. Next spring possibly, still within this fiscal year.
So you're saying budget Pleasant Grove and then, is that what you're saying or no?
I think it's a possibility, yes.
And then we'll we'll have enough money to go ahead and do the other one anyway.
I think Pleasant Grove is obviously the one.
If you do Pleasant Grove Road with Boils, you got five hundred thousand dollars to do, to to do some more paving. Where that paving is gonna be, like you said, he's got a couple of roads, he's listed, uh, I don't think putting in a Wilkinson Lane would really help. I mean, you could do a little small, you could do a section, but it would be just a small section.
Yeah, again, I I mean, we've put out publicly a road paving. It was on our, in our our budget last year, the next cluster that is coming up is that Wilkinson Lane Cluster. That's what my can, I was expecting, that's what my constituents were was expecting, and now we're changing the rules, okay? Uh, we're going back, making a pivot and changing the rules. Um, you know, I'm looking at it right here, I'd asked about it, it was actually on this fiscal year's, uh, road paving list. It, none of these roads were paved, we were still paving the roads from the previous year because no additional funds were put in last year. And now, we're gonna kick it down the road again, we're gonna kick that, kick it, kick the can down the road again and tell these guys to wait. They've been waiting for a long time, uh, they want their roads paved and we're telling them to continue to wait. We can handle it, we can't even handle the potholes that are there now, there are several potholes on that road that that have haven't been filled. We have to call every time to get them repatched, they they don't hold. Uh, it's a continuous nightmare for the people that live on these roads.
But just so you know, Rogers Group, uh, has us on their paving schedule in the spring each year, they do it every year. So that the next time we have another paving, uh, will be in in the spring of next year, so it'll be a while before we get to that anyways.
Have we done any paving this year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did Orchard Park.
Five hundred and two thousand.
Yeah, so I I I think what we could do is, um, we we can. What's that?
We still have until the end of June to pay it, it was brought, it was brought to City Hall, I cut the, I cut the P O for it.
Either way, it's gonna get paid and it's coming out of the fund, so. Yeah.
We've paid the invoices, that's what I'm saying, it's dropping the year date.
Yeah, it hasn't been paid yet, Rogers Group, okay.
I was just gonna say, if we haven't, if we haven't done it yet, then we've got half a million dollars.
Well, we've done it, it's been paved, so it's gonna come out. I mean, there, we, you know, since we know we're not gonna pave till spring and and we would, you know, if we could, um, sit on this for a while. I mean, I guess we could send it through in in the current budget format, send it through and then make the decision later when it comes to, okay, which one do we do? Do we take the full six hundred and four hundred and do the Wilkinson Lane Cluster? Or do we take the four hundred fifty and, or the six hundred thousand we need on Pleasant Grove Road and Boils and do those other ones? We don't have to know that specifically, the money I've already got there, it's just a matter of, um, which project it goes towards. So I'm not asking you to vote on that tonight, so, uh, I'm just letting you know it's in the budget and we have, we like basically, we're we're got a million dollars for next year's budget, million and fifty thousand that we have set aside for paving. So, uh, we can have that discussion, we certainly wouldn't wanna go out and do it like we normally do without probably bringing it before the board, say, which project do you want us to do? It's it's a, it's a time to get this done, which one do you want us to do?
Well, I would rather include it in, because I, I wanna tell, I get questions, they ask, when is this road going to be paid? Well, if I can't give them an answer, because we don't know, okay, uh, so I would rather just put it into the budget. Uh, so we have a definitive answer, instead of stringing them along and making them wait till we make a decision into the fiscal year.
That's up to this board.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's my opinion.
Yeah, I'll do it over y'all, kinda, this isn't a vote tonight, so I just kinda have have some ideas, do I, you know, which way do I go with this and, uh, and, you know, because I gotta present this, you're gonna have your first reading coming up here in a couple of weeks. Uh, and that, you know, it's gonna be important that we get through that first reading, okay, and then we gotta defend it again in June when we have our.
Not saying that we're not gonna fix some of the clusters that are over there. And to me, the clusters are what are, what's more important over there, because you're gonna have continuous traffic on Wilkinson until they finish construction. Pleasant Grove, where Pleasant Grove is, are, they're almost complete with those homes over there, so the impact is less as far as construction traffic that is there. And would cause less damage to the road that we're repaving.
I mean, more houses are left to be built over, I know quite a few, but you have an idea?
What are you talking about?
Old Calista area.
Calista Road. I was, seven hundred homes yet to go.
Seven hundred.
I mean, they're just, they're just about done with Fields of Oakwood, which was two hundred and fifty homes roughly. Concord Springs is done, that was a hundred and fifty homes, so now we're down to Jackson Farms, which is probably three hundred or something homes, maybe.
I'm just saying.
So about seven hundred.
Wilkinson Lane is the big, is the biggest.
When you go over to look at what's left in the parks and 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 legacy farms, we're, we're talking probably a hundred homes, maybe left.
There's no way to restrict their 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 access as far as which way they come in.
By next spring.
About their weight.
They're gonna be done, I think.
The weights of those trucks coming down that road, um, what is it, eighty thousand pounds?
Depends on.
Limit.
Good luck enforcing that, though, I mean.
Yeah, we're not enforcing, you have to have weights and you have to have scales and stuff, we're not doing.
Correct, correct. But most of those trucks coming down there are loaded with lumber, um, so I I don't know.
A lot of concrete trucks.
Concrete trucks are coming in from the opposite direction, uh, they're coming in from.
The backside, Phil Moss.
Most of the time, you just see, uh, trucks with lumber on it, um, but, you know, to wait, they're just now starting uh, to start, uh, building houses at Calista Farms or at, uh, or or Jackson Farms, the same thing with Calista Farms. So waiting until they're finished with those subdivision, that's not gonna, it's not gonna fly.
I'm not saying waiting for the clusters, I'm saying do the clusters, those are the people most impacted right now, Wilkinson Lane can be moved to the next budget year. I'm talking about, is there a way to compromise to do the clusters?
I think what I'm hearing you say.
Yes.
We take, we we go ahead and do the six hundred thousand and get Pleasant Grove Road and Boils done, take the other four hundred thousand and hit those clusters, those.
That's what I think. Next year with more homes that have been done, and then it's budgeted for next year.
Yeah, I mean, I I get more pushback on on Wilkinson Lane than I do, uh, anything, uh, I mean.
See, to me, and I think, to me, Wilkinson is way better than Hollis, or Wilkinson's way better than the Pleasant Grove from seventy-six to to Holly Tree.
Definitely better than Sage Row, which we're trying to be now.
Why don't we pave half of Pleasant Grove and half of Wilkinson?
Well, you guys are gonna hard wrestle for this one.
You know, another.
Is that, is that a decent trade-off? I mean, I just, like, the only thing I have to do is just change the title of what's being done, the funds are gonna stay where they're at.
My sister, both, so for, so both sides of the community and then make sure that we budget next year for Wilkinson.
Clusters on off of Wilkinson, can we take care of the, I mean, take care, really take care of the potholes on on Wilkinson?
Yes.
Yes, a lot of what's going on over there is bad paving practices in the past.
Yep.
What is, and and I hate to split hairs here, but really what what is occurring over there, the reason that you're seeing the asphalt come back out is because you're talking about, it it feels worse than what it is, I'm just gonna be truthful with you. The the first layer of the asphalt is only this much gone, uh, so whenever you put asphalt back in that, it doesn't hold. And with the rain events that we've, we've received, it gets in there, it dislodges that.
But if we milled some of some of those potholes.
And created that depth.
Yeah.
That whole road's gonna have to be milled, isn't it?
I'm sorry.
Is the whole road gonna be have to be milled, Wilkinson?
No, in in what we would wanna do, what I would wanna do with our crew members is we would take it, an eighteen-inch milling head on the front of the skid steer and we would mill two passes where it's, it's low, you know, just a a minor removal of the asphalt that has already occurred, mill side by side about three feet wide and then we would pave patches down on, uh, Autumn Spicer has has really seen what what I'm trying to accomplish on Pleasant Grove Road now. It was uneven and it's bumpy, um, in those.
It's a hot mess, Isaiah.
But we we do have a better tool now to where we'll be able to not depend on just kind of shoveling asphalt where we'll be able to actually mechanically level the asphalt, and I I really think you're gonna see better results.
Yeah, my 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 option or or opinion would be to do Wilkinson and then I think the next worst road there is Hollis Court. And then there's a cutoff off of, um, I think Stovall that cuts across the Indian Ridge, that that connector road there. Those are the three worst roads in the subdivision, uh, but those are, to me, would be the highest priority. And then, if need be, go in to the next fiscal year, but I know Hollis Court is in horrible condition. I think it's the worst road in the city by far, uh, and then, again, I mean, I hear it every day. Um, Wilkinson Lane, you know, it is in horrible shape too, I mean, I I hear that. Going in and repairing the potholes, even if you're milling them out, um, I mean, it just.
I I can tell you that, I mean, everyone already knows, we're gonna complain about Pleasant Grove, we're gonna complain about Wilkinson. That's the, that's the drama up here tonight.
I'll just throw out that Marlin Road has an ice cream maker after.
It does, it does, it does. So we have to come to some kind of resolution.
Well, what I could do is, if you don't mind, under on page eighteen of your budget section there. That'll be the public services capital funds, if you look at the very bottom, it says Pleasant Grove Road pay repaving, four hundred fifty thousand dollars there. What we could do is, uh, name that Pleasant Grove Road slash Wilkinson Lane Cluster or or, you know, the site. I guess cluster roads or off off roads, and then just leave it at that and then the other six hundred thousand he has will all go towards all of that. How to State Street Aid, and that would, that would be one way to, if you guys, I think we're kinda come to some consensus here. Might be good if we can knock out Pleasant Grove Road, but also hit those little side streets off of.
I think it's very compromising, I mean, if, as long as you can promise us that you can patch Wilkinson so that it's serviceable, at least till we can get it.
The next budget year.
Yeah, the next budget year, then we would fund it, because now that brings that cost down instead of being a half, I mean, a million dollars, probably a half million dollars.
Go over to Pleasant Grove and patch it till the next fiscal year.
Because we've already been doing that.
There's nothing left to patch.
There's no, I mean, it's.
Well, he hasn't been milling, he's he's saying that he's gonna be able to use the milling over there, you can go in and cut sections out and mill it and, uh, and asphalt over the top of it.
Wilkinson Lane? And then how many miles would we be doing at Pleasant Grove?
And you've got sections of Pleasant Grove, the section that cuts back towards the park, that's been repaved already. The section that is closest to, uh, seventy-six, that was repaved when we did the turning lane. Uh, that, those two sections are new asphalt or newer asphalt.
And and in one section, though, there was a cross drain that needed to be cut out and and replaced. It was C N P and it had rotted, there was three separate cuts on that road that we've had to do. Um, and we actually have milled on that road just past Kelly's Farm on south, right there, close to Southeast Glacier. We milled down an inch and a half and we did put asphalt in there.
I think if we're gonna have this beautiful new traffic signal and where you spent money on in a road that goes.
You'll have a little bit of paving, because Roger, you'll have to pay a little bit of Pleasant Grove Road, I would think, with that, as they do that intersection there and fix it up. But, um, I think it's a reasonable compromise by the board, I, what I could do, like I said, can, we can change that heading. We'll we'll put it into the, uh, in into the next, into the first reading of the budget, you'll see it there, and then I think that's, that's.
If if Pleasant Grove Road was in such bad shape, why didn't it get moved up ahead of the Orchard Park neighborhood?
Because there were so many, there were so many trucks that were going in and out of there.
Right.
Yeah.
Because of the the construction traffic, we had the opportunity to complete, complete.
I'm of that same opinion, I mean, with all the construction that's been gone, going on over there, that's part of the damage.
We're out of Orchard Park for probably.
Twenty years, could be, yeah, could be twenty years before they get paved again, and that's what we've been doing, is we've been going through these neighborhoods, you know, so. We're, like I said, we've been getting there and we're really, I'm thinking, three or four more neighborhoods yet to get to and, um, but they're all, I mean, in any one of these. Any one of these roads you travel, I mean, you're talking about degrees of of of, uh, change. But if you look at what Pleasant Grove Road is, which is bad, Wilkinson Road is, which is bad, how closely are they? Very close. Go over to Christian Drive Robertson where there's big piles, go over. Go over to Christian Drive Robertson where there's big piles, go over, you know, you go down Marlin Road there in front of, in Marlin Point, you, you don't know if you're gonna come out of the hole or not. It's pretty bad over there.
That goes back to the original thing I was, again, we're not putting any more money into it, you know, I've got.
We are, we're putting a lot of money into our roads.
No, 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 I'm talking about resurfacing. So there's, there's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to our State Street Aid. Uh, you know, we've got Kennedy that's in horrible shape, that, that's on the list that has been put out to the public. That's gonna be pushed out, you know, um.
I know.
At least probably a, a, a year, another fiscal year, if not after that.
Right.
Um, you know, the, the, the Calista Road project, um, you know, when, when it gets completed, we've, we still have a second phase. Calista Road is on this list to be repaved, but it's in horrible condition and, uh, you know, that's gonna be.
We got a road cut that we gotta do there too, don't we? Yeah, we got a road cut there, uh, in that second phase.
That's what I'm saying is, is we need, I, in my opinion, we need to put more money into our road resurfacing, keeping.
Right, which, when we have the census completed, we can put more money in that budget.
Yes.
Well, it's gonna, I don't even, even with that moderate increase in the funds from the census increase, I don't think it's sufficient to, for our annual maintenance on our roads over twenty year life. I mean, that, that's my opinion. And again, we could take a look at that, we can go look at how many miles of road we have, the average life of the road and how much cost that should be annually. But, um, you know, I think there needs to be more money put into, to that budget annually and I think it starts now. I think we start, uh, we need to get caught up first and then we need to look at a proper, I don't think we've had a proper road maintenance resurfacing program for a long time. I think spending just what the Street Aid Fund was providing, uh, is not sufficient. That's why our roads are in the condition they are.
I don't necessarily wanna disagree with you, I just, I have ten department heads and we spend almost this whole time on one department, one item. So, you know, there's a lot of needs in the city, there's a lot of things that have to get done. Uh, you gotta get police vehicles and, and you gotta get fire vehicles and you gotta, you know, the library, these things, we had to cut some things out of the library this year. So there's, you know, they're, they're all sitting here, you know, and, and, and they all need money. And there's only so much money to go around and, and I don't think it's wise to ask for a tax increase, that's why I'm not recommending that you do that to try to offset this cost and try to, or to try to create a special street fund or, or to say that you're gonna take on, like we do with debt service and like we do with park sales tax, a certain portion of our tax money that comes in has to go to that. We haven't, that's something you guys can decide on something later, but right now I don't think I would recommend that, that we do that. I think we, we gotta kind of come to some consensus here as to how we can get this budget passed and make it reasonable and still satisfy ten departments that need to service this community in different ways.
I have one question, you said every line was cut seven percent, is that right?
Yes, every line, even the ones that had capital and it's, I'm still trying to figure out, I'm gonna take for fire.
Where are they gonna shift that money for the engine, it looks like fifty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's gonna be close, I, I, I think we're gonna, we're gonna follow it and I, and I mentioned to Mayor earlier today that, you know, if we get about halfway through the year, if it looks like our fund balance is stronger than we thought it was gonna be, we can come back to this board and say, hey, I'd like to put, you know, say, take some money out of fund balance and put it into a couple of these cap, cap projects that are gonna be, I'm thinking the same thing with my projects, I cut, you know, my road projects, seven percent.
I just did the math real quick on that one, but everybody's gonna suffer, all, all the parties are gonna suffer from that.
I mean, we're already, we're already talking about ways that we're gonna be cutting out the budget, I mean, a lot of things like, instead of a bi-monthly, uh, we're gonna write us, we're gonna go to a quarterly. That's what we used to have years ago. We're thinking about, we're gonna cut out maybe in the Christmas, uh, luncheon that we have for the employees. They're, they're all figuring out, trying to find ways, how am I gonna get that seven percent, cause it, you know, it affects our salary lines too, you know? And, you know, we had, you know, they, obviously salaries are higher than they have been in the past, so, uh, that has to be taken care of, so.
We're just gonna tighten our belts for a couple of years, till we get it under control.
Yeah, I, I.
That's what everybody needs to understand, you know, we're gonna have to do safety over luxury, you know, things that we're, you know, it's not Christmas, you know, we can't. Yeah, it's not a wish list, it is, but it ain't, but, you know, um, you know, we're just gonna have to eat baloney sandwiches for a couple of years and.
Could be, right. Yeah, I mean, I think it, you know, like, the, the right time to do property taxes really is when they do the reassessments. Once we've done both of them like we did this year, cause it dropped to eighty, eighty, what, eighty cents or something, we moved it up, six cents. Um, you know, the next time around, it may drop down to seventy or fifty cents, cause if, if we grow, we continue to grow, that number's gonna keep coming down. So that's gonna be, what, another four more years out before that, you would wanna make that decision. But if you can hold tight for this community and not raise their property taxes, that would be a wise thing to do for all of you that have to give votes.
What was your largest increases year over year from, from the budget, um, I mean, that added to this?
I just told you, it was, it was Rec Center.
Rec Center, what about the pay, uh, the pay increases from last year? How did that impact this year's budget?
It did, I mean, we, it was just, we, you gave us a half percent plus their merit.
No, no, I'm talking about the previous, when we implemented the, uh, the previous, um, the payroll increase.
I'm sorry, Alderman, are you talking about from two years ago to last year? Or are you talking about from the current fiscal?
The current fiscal, the current fiscal year we're in, the pay increases that were implemented.
Those were the numbers that I presented to you at the budget retreat and I honestly don't know what that number was, but it was, I think, around half a million, just, but less than half a million, I'm ninety-nine percent sure. It was, I think, three hundred and fifty thousand for the two and a half percent and approximately fifty thousand for the half a percent that you gave us in cost of living.
Okay, uh, well, looking back, so we had a one point three million dollar increase this current fiscal year we're in right now, is that correct? In payroll?
I would have to look at the numbers.
Jason, does that sound about accurate?
I don't, I don't have a good way to look at that real quickly.
Okay.
Can we get back to you on that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I don't have a way to sort that, uh, just personnel.
Okay.
Just, you're talking about just the one hundred line, just the one line we're talking about?
Are you talking about just the, just the general salary line?
Not overtime and. Benefits, health benefits, all that stuff.
Correct, correct, well, altogether, the, what we, I think we had.
You're talking about all the personnel lines?
Correct.
Okay, yes, that I don't know without actually pulling it up and doing the math on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's gonna be hard, like I said, the department is, they're, they're all looking at how they're gonna save money. Obviously, if somebody leaves a position, they may leave it empty for a, you know, a few months, three months, four months to, to, to try to, you know, get that seven percent that they're trying to, to achieve. So there's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough year for them. Anything else, Mayor, that you need from me?
No, I mean, I think we all agree, our road's not in the best shape and that, that didn't happen overnight and it's not gonna get fixed overnight, same with the stormwater, it's, it's years.
Neglected.
Neglected and not really knowing, on the stormwater front, not really knowing much about what, what should have been done. And it's just gonna take time to, to get it caught up, I mean, as, as much as I'd love to catch it up in one or two years, it's just not gonna happen.
Yeah, and Mayor, you've been here, this is probably your seventh or eighth budget, I can't remember, it's been quite a few years for you too. And you, you know that each year that you've been here, we've been putting money into, into asphalt repaving of roads.
I think we finally.
We're making headway.
We have a, we have a, a list, right? Yeah, and so I think beforehand, we didn't really even have.
No, yeah, I agree, we didn't, we just developed that a few years back, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I would like to see that evolve more because, um, you know, again, I don't think we're funding it properly. I think once we start digging in and, and analyzing it, we're gonna find out that we haven't been funding it properly for years. Um, and then put together, um, lists of roads. This is a list of roads from Hendersonville down to the linear foot to, and the costs that they put out publicly. Uh, I also have a list from Columbia, the City of Columbia, Tennessee, they have the same list that they put out annually, they put it out in their budget. Uh, it goes out in their budget, so everybody could see, uh, exactly what it costs, what the linear feet are for your road and, and what roads are being done. Um, you know, there, it's, it's transparency and I think that's what the citizens want, they wanna see, uh, transparency and, uh, and not have a doubt of when, you know, when is my room gonna be paid?
I think we've been more transparent in the last thirty years.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's, it's intentional, I'm saying I think the more, the more information we put out there, the better, uh, is, it, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I agree, but sometimes you don't need, you, you have a plan, winds change and you, you gotta, you know, you gotta adjust.
Reality.
Yeah, and I think that's what's happened here, is I think the, the intentions were good, um, and, and I think we fully intended to do what we said we were gonna do. And sometimes like, whoops, now we've gotta cut seven percent out of every line, there's just not the money we thought was gonna be there, so. I'm all for getting our, our roads done as quickly as we can, um, but, you know, there's only so much money and.
So the special census, do you think it's gonna go beyond July?
Yes, yeah, I don't think, you know, I, I, I'd be surprised if they're gonna be able to hire anyone with this executive order. We're trying to get a waiver, I mean, we're not.
I mean, why aren't we paying for the, we're paying for the labor.
Yeah, we, we're paying for the labor, there was, there's, and then they're gonna let them go as soon as, they, they're let go as soon as the, you know, the census is complete.
Didn't we already write the check for that?
And we already wrote the check, they have our money, they offered to refund it to us, but we've already, we, we don't know how much they're gonna deduct from the work that they've done so far and they've got a whole rooms upstairs full of documents that they're gonna be using to, to collect the census data and all that, so they've already sent all that stuff to us. I'm not sure what we'll do with all that. You know, so I would rather just hold it a little bit longer, see if we can get it done. Cause I think it's gonna be more, when we look back, what the, the University of Tennessee's, what is that office that they called that?
The University of Tennessee Data Center?
Data Center, they, they had us at about fifteen thousand people, uh, two years ago, I think they showed it.
Two thousand and twenty-three, it's a little over fifteen thousand.
A little fifteen thousand, we think we're closer to nineteen thousand people. So we, we need to, we need that census to get, get that count, get that job, but, you know, it's not gonna give us all the money we need for road paving, it's just not. But, you know, we're knocking out some of these big projects, we're doing some bigger intersections, we're making a lot of progress, I think, in some of these roads. I, I don't wanna think that we're not, cause we really are, we're putting a lot of money into roads.
Sidewalk project at thirty-one and, what was it?
That's a federal project, it's eighty percent.
That's grand, that's mostly grant money, yeah.
Yeah, eighty percent's funded by federal, so we really wanna, you know, take advantage of that and, uh, extend that. And it's not just the sidewalk, it's improving that intersection, Raymond Hurson thirty-one W was new, uh, I think they're putting a grid smart system in there, I think it's part of the, the grant that they'll be modifying that intersection, putting a crosswalks for kids, I mean, for people to cross the road and everything else, yeah.
That alarm, we've got that on the list to repave, is it?
That's three hundred thousand on the budget.
It's a store. Yeah, that, that's a, that's a wastewater project specifically, the wastewater, where, that's an opportunity where they, they initially were planning on going down the middle of the road.
Right.
With the pipes, so, in order, if you're gonna tear up our road, then you fix our road, using enterprise funds.
Yeah, okay.
Joe kinda got us doing that when, Joe Moss, when we were doing some of the other projects.
That makes sense.
I was just trying to see if we could.
Yeah, and it's been sitting there for like four years because that development hasn't, hasn't happened and we, we don't know, I mean, it, it's on again, off again, it's, is it on right now?
So we're just holding it, we're just holding it, we're not?
Yeah, out of wastewater, I mean, again, I can't move that funds into the, into State Street Aid, I can't move it to the general fund.
I was just thinking, it's three hundred thousand for repaving, I'm thinking, well, if it's sitting there and we're not doing anything with it, then we can allocate it somewhere else.
Yeah, that's unfortunate, we can't, Portland tried that and got in all kinds of trouble.
No, I don't wanna get.
When I first got here, they got in all kinds of trouble.
Looking at line items that we can.
Not specifically that, I don't know why, but anyways, they moved money out of the enterprise into the general fund to cover salaries.
What about the money that's owed us for the, for the water line?
We've been, uh, we would just build again for that, so we've collected a half million dollars thus far.
So we've collected some of that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've collected a half million.
Okay, how much was that total, one point two?
Uh, it ended up being a little over two million dollars and that the, we were supposed to bring back about, uh, one point two million.
Were we able to use any of those funds?
Well, it, it's already into the, into the general fund, when it was collected, that five hundred thousand that was collected, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't pay it down on the, on the water line, the, the interest rate we have on all of our loans are really, really low.
If we're able to get, if we're able to get the other seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, and I'm waiting on five hundred thousand for Calista Road from, uh, Stagecoach Development for the, uh, for, to help us with that road, so, that's gonna help us down the road, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so I think if there's any money left after we get done with, if we don't quite get to eleven or ten point five million, whatever it is that we, we borrowed after they took fees and everything out, you know, if we, if we're short of, that's where you need to take that with impact fee money, road impact fee money and knock out Calista Road. That last second phase and jump over to Union Road, cause that's, those roads are bad too, I mean, they're in horrible shape. Unfortunately, I, I don't know if there was a lot of paving that took place back in the eighties and nineties, it just, it seems like we have roads that haven't been paved in thirty, forty years.
Um, we also didn't charge impact fees way back in the day either.
No, no, ma'am, we didn't, that didn't start until the late nineties.
Okay, so are we in agreement? We can move on?
I'm, I'm all set, I mean, the rest of the line, I mean, unless you have any question about any of the other budgets, they're all pretty much, are gonna be fine.
So what, what are we agreeing to?
Well, I was looking at, if we're agreeing to anything, we're gonna, we're gonna change that title from Pleasant Grove to Pleasant Grove slash Wilkinson Lane Off Streets or whatever you wanna call it.
Cluster.
Cluster Streets, and we'll, we'll put that in, we'll, we'll put that in the line item and that'll be in your budget, uh, when we give you the budget ordinance, it'll, it'll say that in there. And then, and that way, you've got, you've got some assurance that we're gonna be going in Wilkinson Lane area to do paving and, and, um, we have, we have assurance that Pleasant Grove Road is gonna get paved and Boils will be in a part of that project.
So, so the four fifty is going to change and then the.
Just the title is gonna change, you know, just the title, we don't, I don't have any titles on, in the, in the State Street Aid, we don't have anything specifically titled on it, it's how we're breaking out the streets. I mean, that's something we probably could do in the future if need be, um, you know, just cause you're, you're, you're asking for transparency and what roads are gonna be paved. That's something, I guess, we could do that. Under State Street Aid, we, we have a cap that just says six hundred thousand in that line. If you were looking, wanna talk about, be page, age thirty-seven, we have an asphalt overlay program. I guess we could, in, in, on page thirty-seven, we could also modify that if we need to, to, to also list the same thing, that same Pleasant Grove Road slash, uh, Wilkinson Cluster. We could put those both in there, so the money stays the same, it's a million dollars, it's all we have for paving roads. And we'll say, we're, that's the two projects we're, we're focused on.
I'm okay with calling them out, but the, the problem is expectations get said and then you have a sinkhole that opens up on one hole and it's like, well crap, now we can't do that, we gotta, somebody's upset because they saw it on a list and it's.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, I like the flexibility of just having the money there.
Asphalt overlay program like it is right now.
But, 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 yeah, I, I mean, I see Sam's point too. But, okay, well. So if we're gonna go with this, you guys will go in and repair, um, Wilkinson.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He's actually at three times, you better make sure you get that right.
I, I mean, I think it's important.
No, it is.
Yeah, it's very important to get those done, yeah.
Yeah, safety needs to trump them all, so.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, they do.
Safety trumps all, so.
How does, uh, just to stick another fly in the, I mean, how, how does, how does the number of vehicles factor into that?
It's a, the, the average daily traffic, the ADT of the roadway.
Does that factor in the matrix?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it's a, it's a line, you can read how on the spreadsheet, there are columns upon columns upon columns upon columns. The, the edge line cracking, center line cracking, potholes, um, the delamination of asphalt, the, I mean.
The only reason I ask is, I, I know he's like concerned with Hollis Court, which I understand completely, I've been on it a bunch. But again, Marlin Road has got potholes that deep in it. I think there's a difference between the two and the number of vehicles that travel them, in my opinion, should be considered in that as well.
Yeah, that's, that's a very common thing by Ashto D dot.
And I, I'm not saying Hollis Court isn't important, I'm not saying, I, the political part of, of roads, I don't think anybody up here thinks it's political, we just want it to get better. I don't care whose ward is in, that's irrelevant, we just want our citizens to be served well, so, that's, that's my only question, I don't care whose ward it is, I'd, get them fixed.
I think, I think Marlin, some of the, some of that's gonna be fixed by the development.
I hope so.
I hope I'll fry them. That goes back, that goes back, uh, Jeremy, to what I've, again, back to putting more money in, I think we're just so far behind. Uh, trying to, to get caught up, uh, and it's safety, it really is.
It is.
And, and that's what, uh, you know, we know that, we know we've got roads in horrible shape and, uh, how we got there, you know.
Can you emphasize that a little bit more?
Yeah, so. Well, it, they are.
I, I, we all, we all know.
So, um, and, um, and I, you know, I think we need, uh, to, to put more funds in it.
Well, what we need not do is, is take funds away.
Right.
Right.
From that, and I think, I think, you know, it may have been a lower priority at one time, not since I've been, we, we've taken every inch of State Street Aid and put it in the roads. But if you, if you don't do it, we have all these new subdivisions that are being built in the last four or five years. Ten, fifteen, fifteen years from now, they're all gonna be saying they need paved.
I, I think we do need to increase the money and I wish we could do it all in one shot and we just, we just, we just can't. The hole wasn't dug overnight, but, but I think we need to keep adding to it and kinda heading that, that direction. Every year.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing what we need to do here, so I'll just, we'll leave that, I just need to make sure I had that, that Wilkinson Cluster in there with Pleasant Grove Road on the, on, on the general fund and then just run with it, knowing we're gonna use the money for those two areas.
Yes.
And if, and if, unless we have some kind of disaster. And if, best we can, unless we have some kind of disaster and we have to fix a street or something.
If, going into the fiscal year, if it looks like we're bringing in more than we want, I'd like every, every available dollar to go towards just moving Wilkinson up and getting it, getting it paved.
Fortunately, we have three state routes that come through our city and an interstate, so they all have to be taken care of by the state.
Right.
We, uh, interviewed a young man for a public services supervisor and he came in and said, hey, I noticed over here on that one, your one road, there's water coming up, and then he goes, you know, and what'd he say to you about that?
I know where that is.
Yeah, and they told us they're gonna fix that, but they haven't, but that, that's something, you know, that's not our responsibility, it is our responsibility to let them know and complain to them about it. Uh, but, you know, we're not gonna go out there and fix it. Now, I know these guys want some, I'll go out and throw some cold patch or some hot patch in a, in a hole that's on the state route if they're not, if the state's not getting to it, but we do do that.
Take for a year or two on that complaint? Pretty close to it. Yeah, yeah.
Joe Moss sent me out there initially whenever I first started.
Yeah, when did they pave that? They paved that, they were five years ago? Yeah, and they paved right over top of it. That's the way to, so, any other questions that you have? If not, I'm, I'm all settled, I think I know what I need to do.
There's a surplus, or it looks like we're bringing more money, let's, let's make Wilkinson the top priority first.
All right.
Case you have a million dollars laying around.
Yeah, I'd like to know where that's flying in from, but I pray.
Chief, start writing more tickets.
You know, that happens in some cities, small towns, no, really, small towns, they'll do that. They got the chief out there, these guys are out there, you know, speed traps, yeah, hiding behind signs.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want that.
No, definitely not. All right, any other discussion?
Was there no, there was no information here on the municipal court?
Oh, that's because we moved the money to finance, cause we're, we're operates out of and we've been consolidating slowly our, our budget line items. Staff and I have been, we've all worked on that. We're even gonna make another change, probably going into next year's budget, where we're gonna take like, police has broken up into three different sections, we're gonna combine it all into one. Police, one fire, and it's one parks, the museum, senior center.
Yeah.
It's all gonna be, we're gonna be making those because the comptroller's asking for changes and stuff like that, so we're, we're gonna be moving in that direction. Yep, that's.
And I did, I did notice, um, under firefighting personnel services, um, overtime, amount of overtime we've paid this year.
Yeah, they pay a lot of overtime, yeah, it's built into their.
I know we're talking about cutting a firefighter.
I mean, I know they put there all the time.
But it's twenty percent of our total.
Built in automatic, right?
Yes, sir, so the firefighter overcome schedule is based on a rotating, and, cause we pay on two weeks, right, we've been doing a month, twenty-eight days.
Right, right.
On their first pay period in the rotating schedule, they have a hundred and six hours that they work, the next is a hundred and ten, and the third is a hundred and twenty. We pay anything over a hundred and six is overtime, so like two out of every three payrolls, they are automatically getting overtime, which is one of the reasons that overtime is so large. And I also do know, and I know Chief could probably speak to this better, that they are maintaining their seven minimum, which means they're trying to backfill every shift. Because of going into a house fire, it is much safer for them to have seven on shift than even be down just one individual. So if they can backfill it, they will, but that's why their overtime is so high.
So it's, it's not even if we added a firefighter, it wouldn't make a difference in the overtime?
It would a small bit, but it probably would have.
Right, would increase it some.
It would end up eating out because that guaranteed overtime that's in there.
Yeah, I just know I've heard concerns about them, you know, needing more firemen, you know, so.
And that is, I mean, that's, we all need more personnel, firefighters are definitely one of those that does. And I think Rob, Jerry and I have discussed it at length, and although he knows that it's hard this year, he understands why we have to do that.
Right.
They are able to, ninety-eight percent of the shifts, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, they are able to backfill those to keep seven on shift at all times.
Yeah, that word minimum, that I don't like, so, um. I think that's all I got.
Okay.
I have, I have one question, about personnel, that's another catch of the firefighter and police officer, which are near and dear to my heart, of course.
Right.
I see we're, we're adding a finance customer service rep. Is, is there a big backup there? I mean, is, is that something we, do we have people standing in line normally?
Generally, generally not on certain dates, it's a, it's kinda hard to spread the workload for that. You know, typically Thursdays are a lot slower than Mondays. Certain times of the week, I mean, certain times of the month are, are a lot slower than other times, like right now, we're before we're sending the bill out for May, we're a little bit slower now. But once we get the bill out, we'll have more people come in.
Is that because people are paying in cash and online?
Excuse me.
That's because, that's because we, believe it or not, we still have people that spend sixty-nine cents to mail us a check, a lot of people, a lot of people, talking.
Hey, Jason, I know our customer base has gone up significantly, but.
I mean, I think people are mailing in checks because they can't pay their bill online, that's what I'm getting at. They have to do an ACH, you have to file for them, by the way, you don't get confirmation that you get it, you don't get an email, anything, you just have to hope it comes out. So that's, that's a piece of the puzzle I think needs to be fixed.
You can't schedule it, you can't schedule it.
You don't get confirmation, email saying, we received your information for your ACH and it's gonna come out on X, Y, Z date. I even followed up with you on that and was told, well, we don't do this every month, we don't do it every day, it only does it once a month, and you'll just have to check your bill and make sure it happened. And to me, that's not good customer service. And it only, and I, and in my opinion, people are spending sixty-nine cents to send you a check because it's not easy to just go click, I paid my bill. I can do that on any other thing that I have for a bill, and, but I cannot do it with my silver bill here.
Yeah.
And trash.
We can turn that back on because we shifted that, that cost that's a hundred fifteen thousand dollars a year.
I, I would get, I would bet it would save you.
Waste water fund this year.
Yeah, I would bet it would save time and effort on your people and staff. Yeah, I would bet it would save a lot of time and effort with your people and staff and make your life a lot easier.
Absolutely.
Yeah, cause I don't wanna see us cut emergency personnel.
Yeah, we're not cutting, we're just not adding.
We're not adding, but.
We're not cutting, we're not adding.
It says cut on the page, so I'm just.
I'm in finance myself, so I get, but I think there are ways to make, hit an easy button, and this is an easy button that can be hit and fixed really quick.
It was a cost-saving measure, it's something that I've tried to, to go through, I mean, we're not, we're not in the private sector, we're not talking about profits, we're talking about saving costs. The money that we save, you can spend in other departments. The money that we've made, the money that we've made by moving money every week to earn interest.
Right, but if you're having to hire another person, but if you're having to hire another person and pay another salary, that's adding more to the budget. So whatever you're saving, you're not really saving because you're gonna add another person to the budget to do that. And in my opinion, you're gonna save more money in the long run by adding a button that says I can pay my bill online than adding another employee.
We're heavily cross-stringed.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, that, that says finance CSR, but, I mean, I'm taking stuff up there this week about collecting the link of property taxes. So I'm, I mean, I've got, I'm using the staff that we have to try to get as much as we can done.
Right, but it would free up time if you weren't processing checks for silver bills, right?
No, because then you're processing them on, uh, online.
But it's.
It gets processed one way or another.
It's electronic when you do it online and it's an electronic general ledger, right?
If it's not, then we need to look at our system.
Right, that, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm just saying.
We'll have him look into that, I know that.
I think there's easier ways.
Yeah, last year he asked for person and we, we've cut it and he hasn't had an additional person, you financed.
Never, I added person since I've been here.
Ten years that he's been here and, and, uh, so I knew that his, his case, I mean, obviously, users have gone up, the number of users we had, uh, the number of billings that we had have gone significant, the amount of invoices.
I've been here probably fifteen, fifteen hundred or two thousand extra users.
Yeah, yeah, it's quite a bit. That's what we're looking at, but I, you're making some very valid points, we, he'll, he'll take a look at that.
Yeah, we need to just, I know we're gonna have growing pains, gonna have a lot of them, we just need to make sure that, you know.
He's gotta find seven percent in his budget to cut, so he may not be adding this person for a while, and he may not be starting for a while.
He might be able to save them personally.
What, what about the IT position? That, that's still budgeted?
Yeah, that, that reason we kept that in there is cause all the departments feel that that's a pretty important position to have. And, uh, we're paying out anyways, we're gonna try to reduce some of our costs that we're paying to a contractor to, to bring that in-house, uh, for the day-to-day stuff. Cause every time we have to call the contractor out, she's here.
Yeah, sorry.
You tell them how much.
It disappeared. Um, every time we have to call Blackline Technology, it costs us approximately thirty dollars because we have to pay them a fifteen minute minimum. Um, so one of the reasons why, and I consider putting off to make up my seven percent, because like everybody else, I have to find that somewhere in my budget. I consider putting off hiring my IT person for a couple of months, but then all I'm doing is passing that cost off to Blackline, I'm not actually saving anything. So I plan on still starting that position in July with the hopes that it'll be able to save us.
Will we still contract with Blackline?
Yes, we will have Blackline there for networking specifically, um, Jason understands our network, he built the majority of it. So he'll be here for handling major server issues, but I've talked with Jason extensively about this, our hope is that his, not the reoccurring cost that we pay him, cause we do pay him like our Microsoft three sixty-five, a lot of our services, he handles that as a pass-through for us, we'll still pay him for those. But as far as the, um, actual network service, we're hoping to reduce that probably down to maybe reduce it eighty percent. And Jason is aware of that, um, he and I've had a long conversation and he feels that we're large enough now to warrant having a full IT on staff. And he also is planning on being a part of the training on that person so they know our network as well as he does. So hopefully, as time goes on, we'll need him less and less, but use him mostly for backup and for when the IT person is off on vacation.
Yeah, we're, we're planning on adding other duties to the position, one of them is gonna be recording these meetings for us.
And they're taking over all of the phone systems, we have a lot of different duties that right now are piecemealed out to all the different departments.
And like storm, doesn't stormwater have issues, don't, don't they have someone they contract out for some of their stuff over there?
For stormwater or wastewater?
Wastewater, sorry.
Yes, wastewater does, um, but that's.
This would not be it.
This would not be, okay.
This is specific and has to be monitored by the state and handled separately.
Okay.
I have no problem with that position, we've needed it for years, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
One question I do have about that position in particular.
Yes, sir.
Is, um, nothing sucks worse than when you're in the middle of a shift on Saturday and nobody can get the network up. Is that person gonna be on call for those situations? You can't do reporting, you can't do anything that's necessary.
Correct, but there will be specific instances on which you can and cannot call that person if you forgot your password because you didn't watch the nine hundred warnings come up. Don't call them on Saturday.
But I, when the network's down, you can't do your.
Can't do your CAD stuff on there.
You can't get anything, it's, it's terrible frustrating.
Down, they lose everything over there.
You can't even get some, there were days when you couldn't get the printer to print off.
Yes.
You know, CAD reports or.
Yeah, so this would be considered for, this person would be considered on call, just like stormwater or wastewater or any of those.
Necessary.
Yes.
Anything else?
I've stirred enough.